Hey guys, please do me a favor and confirm that you can hear me. Just do me a favor and confirm for me that you can hear me. Do me that favor. Good afternoon Vanity Slay and you're welcome. Okay, so you can hear me? Okay guys, so we're gonna get ready to get started. I am not going to delay this because when I tell you guys, I have been having issues for maybe like actually since I got home. My class ended, I let my students go early today and I've been home since for a few hours now and I've been having internet issues. And come to find out, it's my laptop. It's not even my, it wasn't even my internet. It's my laptop. And I've been knowing for a while that I need to get a new laptop. I'm thinking about getting an Apple. Do you guys have, I want to know what do you guys think of? I'm thinking about getting a desktop though versus the Apple laptop. Like I don't want a MacBook. I want an actual, I want the iMac. Any of you guys had that? Let me know what you think of it versus the actual laptop. Because I already have, I have a couple of different laptops, but I want to get the actual iMac. Let me know if any of you guys have that and then how the camera is on it. Because I want to be able to do videos on it too, if it has a quality camera. Let me know guys. But anyway, we're gonna get ready to get started. And to answer your question, as a matter of fact, let me just go ahead to this next one. So Keishonda, I see your question and that is one of the questions I'm going to address. So yes, my old videos do help with the new tests because, and I know I say this on every video, but I gotta make sure I remind you guys that the test is the same, it's just some added content. So my old videos will help with the new version of the test, same information. Yes, it's gonna help with the CMA, Keishonda, because the foundational information is the same. However, some of the content may be different. So I'll give you an example, Keishonda, and anybody else that may be taking the CMA or RMA or other certification besides the CCMA. Foundational information will never change. Terminology means the same on whatever test you take. You know, anatomy, all of that is the same. You know, surgical procedures, diagnosis code, everything is the same. The only things that really will differ from one test to another is that like your CMA, that test is more broader. So it may cover more. So I definitely recommend still getting that study guide, even though my videos do help. But like for an example, one of the items that the CCMA talks about is like, what is it? Like the social cues, we talked about that yesterday, like cues to action for a patient, a call to action. You know, that's one of those things that maybe the RMA or you know, CMA may not cover. So hopefully that makes sense, Keishonda. But yes, the foundational medical stuff is all the same. It's just that they may have, they may talk about some things on one test that the other one doesn't cover. So hopefully that makes sense. And then yes, you can get a job if you're not certified, but you don't want to. You want to definitely get certified and make yourself more marketable. And then if you fail a test, of course you want to double down on studying the areas you fell short in. And then study tips is on this slide here. You guys can take a screenshot of that. You can also download, I have a study guide checklist in the description box of this video. You can download that as well. Pretty much the same thing that I have here, but it's just in the form of a checklist. So you can print it or whatever, check off everything that you, just make sure you do all of those things on that study checklist, okay? True or false? An autoscope needs to be sanitized between uses. It does not need to be disinfected or sterilized. Is that true or false? An autoscope needs to be sanitized between uses. It does not need to be disinfected or sterilized. Is that true? Or is it false? An autoscope. What is an autoscope used for? Somebody tell me what an autoscope is used for? Let's see, let me make sure I get on here from my phone too, so that way I can see the chat on YouTube. Let's see. Okay, yep. Okay, I see the answers coming in here. Let me skip this here. Alright, let's see. Okay, so this is true. It can just, I forgot the question again. Oh yeah, sanitized. Yes, this is true. It can be sanitized. It does not need to be sterilized or disinfected. You can simply wipe it off with the sanitization wipe between uses, an autoscope, okay? And that's, yes, it is used to look inside the ear. Alright, true or false? A nasal specula needs to be disinfected between each use. Is that true or false? And guys, make sure you take note of this. As I always say, make sure you have a pen and paper because these are items that they throw in there on the, on the tests. They'll say this, you know, they'll just throw out like different things like the autoscope or arthromuscope. Those can be sanitized, nasal specula. Think about what the nasal specula is. Think about what specula is anyway. Somebody tell me what specula is. What is specula used for? Whether it's nasal specula, vaginal specula, or you know, anal specula. What is, what is specula used for? Okay, let's see. Alright, so that's true. So specula is disinfected. Specula goes inside the nose. So when we, when we, when we look at the word specula, spec is to look, right? So we need to look, we use the specula to view and to view, right? So like your vag, yep, look inside. Someone said look inside. So like your vaginal specula or your, your, your anal specula or your nasal specula. Alright, why would a physician be sued for abandonment? What would be a reason that a physician may be sued for abandonment? Why would a physician be sued for abandonment? What would be a reason? Yeah, somebody says specula is used to open a body cavity. Yep, and lick inside. That's the word I was looking for, Iris, cavity. That's what I couldn't think of, inside a body cavity. Thank you. Oh Iris, wait a minute. You were on my class. Did you take your test yet? You were in my study, my virtual study group and I'm saying your name wrong. I'm sorry. Did you take your test yet? Why would a physician be sued for abandonment? For discontinuing a patient's medical care without advance notice. So many people don't realize that when, when, when the physician and the patient begins their relationship, it is a contract, a legal contract. So remember guys, we talked about implied consent, informed consent. We talked about express contract and you know, informed contract, right? I'm sorry, implied contract. An implied contract is a legal contract that is, that goes into effect based on, based on the person's actions, right? So when that patient comes into the office, they go and they get taken back to the exam room, right? Once the physician comes into their room and begins to see that patient, guess what? A contract has been formed, a legal contract. And guess what? That patient can decide at any moment that they don't want to see their provider anymore. But can the physician do the same? Absolutely not. They have to give notice. So anytime a provider decides that he, he or she does not want to see a patient anymore, they have to give notice, okay? If they are taking, if they are leaving the practice or taking a long leave of absence, they have to have another physician there in, in his or her place because that is legally abandonment of the patient. And many people don't know that they can sue for that. So yes, discontinuing a patient's medical care without advance notice. They have to write a letter. They have to give 30 days. They have to make the medical records available for the patient. It's a whole process. You guys probably learned it when you, when you were learning the administrative part of medical assistant. What are some signs that a patient may be in shock? And may, and yesterday we talked about anaphylactic shock. So a patient being in shock and anaphylactic shock, which is a severe allergic, a severe allergic reaction is not the same thing. So in this case, a person has gone into shock. Not the same as anaphylactic shock. Hey Tori. Okay, okay, I see you said not yet. You plan to take, okay, got you. Okay, oh, you're fine. I actually started late. I was having internet issues. So you were fine. Congratulations, Fimoa. Congratulations. What are some signs that a patient may be in shock? Okay, so hypertension, I say hypertension, hypotension. And yes, someone did say low blood pressure. Patient may appear cold and will have pale, sweaty or moist skin. So shock happens when there is a, not enough oxygen getting to the, to, to the, to the organs, to the body organs. And that can happen from a loss of blood and low blood pressure, right? So severe blood loss can cause a patient to go into shock. And this is why I wanted to remind you guys that it is, we're not speaking of the anaphylactic shock, which we spoke of yesterday. Okay, let's see. A pediatric patient weighs 25 pounds. Calculate the patient's weight in kilograms. Yesterday we did vice versa. So today, we are going from pounds to kilograms. Yesterday we went, oh no, did we? We might have done pounds to kilograms. I thought we did kilograms to pounds. I can't remember. Alright, let's see. I don't see any answers coming up here. Okay, 11.4 kilograms. 11.4 kilograms. So you're gonna divide by 2.2. It looked like you may have, looked like somebody put 55. It looks like you had the, you guys that are putting 55, you had the calculation mixed up. So when you're going from pounds to kilograms, you're gonna divide by 2.2. And then when you're going from kilograms to pounds, you are, you are multiplying by 2.2, okay? So just remember that kilograms to pounds, you are, what did I say? Multiplying and then vice versa, you're dividing, okay? Alright, what is CLIA? What is CLIA? If someone was to ask you, what is CLIA? Tell me what CLIA is for. Um, yeah, so, so I rounded it up because when you calculated it, it came to like 3.66 something. So I rounded it up to 11.4 because even if you multiply 11.4 times 2.2 is gonna give you, what did we say? 25, I think it was, I think it was 25, yeah. So you can round it up, but if the option is 11.36, because you know, it's gonna be, it's going to be multiple choice. So if you see that as an option, you know, you choose that or you choose 11.4, whatever the option is. If you're, if you mean if you can just write it in the patient's chart, yes, you can write it exactly how you calculated it. If you're using the EHR, it's going to round it up anyway, when you put it in. Alright, clinical laboratory improvement amendments. They regulate laboratory testing, okay? I see that somebody did, yep, see a couple of people did write it out. Okay, so what are some examples of CLIA waved tests? These are low complexity tests. I noticed somebody put low complexity tests. So no, low complexity tests are CLIA wave tests. I have understanding from the video, but getting the final answer. I've understood. So somebody said, trying to understand what they're saying, understood. So you got the formula, but you said getting the final answer is your problem. So as long as you know the formula, you'll, you'll know the answer because you know, it's gonna be multiple choice. So you'll be able to choose, if your number is a little bit off because of the rounding, you know, or because you didn't round up or down or whatever, it's gonna be, you're just gonna choose the number that's closest. They would never trick you to a point where, you know, they will give you a number, two numbers so close, right? So they're not gonna give you like 11.3 and 11.4. You gotta choose between them. The other options are gonna be so way off that you're gonna know that that's not the answer anyway. So even if you don't have it exact, you know, you'll be able to choose the correct answer. And I'll give you guys a little, little, a little tip too. If you're, when you're doing that, you know, what was I gonna say? Oh, pounds to kilograms and you gotta divide by 2.2. If you don't have a calculator, just choose the answer that's closest when you divide it by two, right? So if you have like 24, right, 24 pounds, 24 divided by two, you may not necessarily be able to calculate 2.2. But if you think about it, 24 divided by two is 12, right? So you choose the number closest to 12. So that's kind of a little tip for you guys and make it a little easier. But, but of course, if you are in the office and you gotta write that exact weight, you write it exactly, you do that calculation and you write exactly what you get. Or you know, if you're working with EHR, it's gonna automatically convert it for you anyway. So if you get like 11.4, you go enter it into the EHR, it's going to, you can automatically convert it anyway. Alright, you guys, I see your examples. Let's see. Yep, you guys are on point. There's more, but there's, these are the most common one. Some, some of the most common ones, urine pregnancy test, the strep test. Now remember, urine pregnancy test, that's HCG. And I did notice somebody put that, yes, HCG is a urine pregnancy test. So that's one of the ways they may get you on the test. Because they, they may not necessarily say urine pregnancy test. It may just say HCG, okay? And that's the hormone, the pregnancy hormone. And it's done by blood as well, but it'll specifically say a blood test, if they're talking about the blood test. But anyway, yes, HCG, strep test, fecal or cold glucose testing, urine dip. You also have the mono testing and what else? The, what's the mono testing and something else I'm thinking about? The, oh, cholesterol testing as well. Alright, what are some of the roles of patient navigators? So yesterday we talked a little bit about a patient advocate, which we said, you know, they speak up and act on behalf of a patient, right? To make sure that they are getting proper care and things like that. What are some of the roles of a patient navigator? Patient, what are some of the roles of a patient navigator? So they identify the needs and barriers of a patient. They also assist with the coordination of care and find the community resources. I do see somebody put in there, community resources, yes. So they're the ones that's gonna help the patient. So usually, once the provider sees the patient, if the patient needs some resources, they're gonna send them to the patient navigator, okay? And that navigator is gonna help the patient with needs. Let's say the patient needs, you know, like meals on wheels, right? They're usually, you know, maybe bedridden, right? And they need meals on wheels. They need someone to deliver food for them. The patient navigator is gonna help with that. Any type of resources that the patient need, maybe the patient needs, what else? Maybe, maybe transportation issues, insurance issues. You know, they, they need help with applying for maybe, you know, the government insurance or any type of needs that the patient, any barriers that they have. The patient navigators are gonna help with that as well, okay? I'm trying to think of something now, something specific. So the meals on wheels, if they need food, transportation, housing, let's say a patient confides in a doctor that they are homeless, right? The patient navigator is gonna try to help with that as well. What are the kidneys responsible for? And so this is another important thing too, guys. Make sure you know what each body, what each organ is responsible for, okay? Make sure, if you know you struggle with anatomy, right? Anatomy means that, you know, we're referring to the body, right? We're referring to the structure of the body. Physiology is the, is the functions, right? So you gotta make sure you know the anatomy, the parts of the body, the body systems, right? What they're responsible for and, and some of the structures of those systems, okay? Alright, see the answers coming in? Yep, they filter the blood and form urine. Somebody said, Leah said filtration and excretion, yep. Filtration and it's filtering the blood and forming urine, yep. Excreting urine, that is exactly correct. Yep, you guys put filter in the blood, yep. You guys are on it. Okay, what are purple waste containers used for? Purple waste containers? Oh, where was that person at? I was... Okay, I'm, I don't know. I hope, I don't want to say your name wrong, Mr. Garcia. But I see you said you're watching from, from Florida. I'm glad you're here. I'll just call you Mr. Garcia, because I don't want to say, say your last, your first name incorrect. Purple waste containers, what are they used for? Alright, I don't see anybody putting anything special, medical waste such as radioactive waste. Make sure you put that. We know the red is what? Biohazard container, right? Alright, what is orthostatic hypotension? Orthostatic hypotension? What is orthostatic hypotension? Okay, so it's a drop in blood pressure upon standing. Yeah, so somebody said, yep. Yes, so a drop in blood pressure upon standing usually causes dizziness. So if you, patient comes in and says, you know, you, you ask the patient, what brings you in to see the provider today? And they say, well, I've been having dizziness specifically, you know, every time I stand up, I get dizzy. You know, this is often because of the drop in blood pressure when they stand or sit up, okay? Now, if this happens, you wanna automatically just go ahead and initiate the orthostatic vital signs, okay? And how do you take those orthostatic vital signs? So the patient says I'm dizzy every time I stand up. The doctor is most likely gonna order this anyway. So you're gonna go ahead and do orthostatic vital signs. How are you gonna do that? Hi Melanie, hopefully I'm saying your name right. I'm glad you made it. When, when is your test, Melanie? Okay. I'm just giving you guys a few moments to, to write it in. I do see, okay, I see a couple of people wrote it, yep. Alright, so let's see. So you're gonna take their vital signs while they're laying down. Then you're gonna wait a minute. Yep, Melanie, you're correct. You take, you wait a minute in between each one. You wanna take it while they're lying down, sitting and then standing, okay? Now, I will tell you guys, I know on the CCMA, I know one of the questions they asked was about, it'll say something like, do you take the patient vital signs as soon as they come in the room? No. You wanna take a few minutes. You wanna wait if you can, at least five minutes before you start taking the patient's blood pressure and other vital signs. Because remember, you just brought them back to the room. They've been walking, so they can be high just in that moment. So they'll try to get you like that. So just know it's about five minutes before you start taking their vital signs. This is why you wanna, you know, when you first take them back to the room, that's when you wanna just find out why they're here. So what brings you in to see the doctor today? Okay, well, how long has that been going on? Okay. Have you taken any medications for it? Okay, what other medications are you on? Yes, when you get through their medications, you know, their allergies or whatever, social history and then you wanna do the vitals after you've done everything else because you don't want to take it right away and get a false high reading because it's probably just high just because they just walked in, okay? But yes, so vital signs are taken lying down and then sitting up and then standing, okay? Alright, what is abstracting when it comes to billing? What is that? What are we doing if we're abstracting? What are we doing if we are abstracting when it comes to billing? Yeah, so watch what I said. Take the patient vital signs after they relax. They could be anxious. That is so true. I can't even tell you guys how many times I've had patients coming in. Oh, and don't let them be running late. They, if they're running late, they're already anxious and you know, kind of out of breath from brushing. So you know, you always want to kind of give them a few minutes to sit before you start taking their vital signs. Alright, so when we're abstracting, we are reviewing a patient's medical record to determine what diagnosis and procedure codes should be used. And I'm gonna give you guys a little bit more to this because one of the CCMA questions, it asks like, it'll ask, this may be in the question. It may say, what, what are you basically like? What part of the billing process is when you're reviewing a patient's medical record to determine what code should be used? That's abstracting. So we got that, right? Another one is auditing. So when you're auditing, you are going through and reviewing, right? So think about what you're doing when you're auditing something, right? You're reviewing it, okay? Another one is, is called reviewing. It's called reviewing. But the definition for reviewing when it comes to billing is making sure that the provider is reimbursed properly, okay? So they're making sure that the, that the provider is reimbursed what they're supposed to be paid, okay? So you know what those mean, just in case you see a question like that and they ask, you know, well, you know the difference between them. So you got again, the, what did I say? Reviewing, that's making sure the provider is paid properly. Auditing is reviewing. Abstracting is, is here. And then the other one you may see as an option is unbundling, when they're unbundling codes. Okay, Nina says she's watching from Georgia. Welcome. Alright, what's the purpose of an ABN? What is an ABN and what is the purpose of it? What is an ABN? What is an ABN? So it's not a bill. I'm not gonna give the Um, so it's not a bill. I'm not going to give the answer just yet, but no, it's not, not a bill. It does have something to do with the bill, but it's not an actual bill. I'm just going to give it a couple more seconds, see if any answers pop up. The purpose of an ABN. Okay, so the advanced beneficiary, I noticed. This notifies a patient that the services may or may not be covered by Medicare, okay? Now, this is something that a, that a patient signs before they even had the procedure done. Um, at least that's how it works in, in my experience. I don't even want to say, you know, I can't, I, I can't even speak for other offices, but I know, so like for an example, if we scheduled a patient, let's just say for stress tests, this is the cardiology office I'm speaking of that I worked in. Um, anytime we schedule a patient for maybe a stress, a nuclear stress test, right? The ABN will automatically print out when we made the appointment to give the patient to sign so that they would understand, okay, Medicare may or may not cover this, okay? So just remember, ABN is related to services, is related to Medicare and that means that the services may or may not be covered. So the patient is signing that they understand that they may be responsible for this payment. So that's another way they may define it. Um, I've seen it defined like that on the CMAA, if any of you guys are taking administrative tests. I did see that as a definition for the ABN, that the patient is accepting financial responsibility. So that is one of the definitions, at least on the CMA. I don't know if it's, if it's one of the CCMA. Um, but this is definitely one of the definitions for CCMA. Okay. Violet is watching from New Orleans, welcome. How often should a bone density screening be done for females who are sixty-five and older? And if you don't know, you can take a guess, guys. Don't worry. If you get it wrong, it's fine. Just take a guess. If, if you don't know for sure, you'll find out the, what it is in a moment, but if you want to just take a guess. How often should a bone density screening be done for females who are sixty-five and older? Okay, I see some answers coming in. Alright, so that's every two years, okay? Add that to your notes for bone density for female every two years, okay? Alright, how often should a colonoscopy be done for patients who are forty-five to seventy-five? Again, if you don't know, you can take a guess. Three thirteen Angie, yes, this helps for the CMA as well, but I do recommend getting that study material because that test may cover more than what I am covering on these videos, but yes, it does help. Okay, so colonoscopy forty-five to seventy-five, how often? Okay, I see the answers coming in. Okay, so this is every three years, okay? Every three years. Oh Martha, you said you're taking a test. Oh, you must be on a different time zone. Where are you located Martha? Because it's four o'clock PM here. I'm on Eastern Standard. Where are you located Martha? And we're sending you good luck for your test today. She's about to take her test at four PM. But I'm wondering where, where she's located because it's four PM here. What is pulse oximetry test for? What is it testing for? What is pulse oximetry testing for? Hey, we got Virginia Society of Medical Assistance watching. Good afternoon, good afternoon. Is that Amanda? Alright, what are we checking for? Alright, I see the answers coming in. They're giving you good luck for your test today, Martha. Let me know what, where you're watching from. I'm curious to see what, um, I'm assuming maybe, um, you aren't on PST. Yep, the amount of oxygen in the blood, and the amount of oxygen in the blood. You guys are on it. Y'all are ready for your test. I see y'all are ready because y'all are on it. I would a spirometry testing for? Okay, Amanda. Hey Amanda, that's Amanda from the VSMA, guys. I did put the announcement out, ladies and gentlemen, that next Saturday, April sixth, if you guys are in the DMV area, Virginia Society of Medical Assistants are having their annual medical assistant conference and I will be a speaker there. If you guys are in the DMV area, definitely, um, let me know if you guys can make it out. And the best part is that you get a CEU for the session. So please, if you are in the DMV area, I hope you guys can come out. Even if you're a student, even better, because students, the, the tickets are only ten dollars if you're a student. Um, that, I believe the link is in my bio. If it's not, I'll make sure I add, I mean, in the description, I'll make sure I add it. Alright. Sprometry is measuring the ventilation function in a normal breath of a patient. Yes, yep, you guys are on it. I see some of these answers coming in. Alright guys, uh, so what are usual customary and reasonable fees? What's UCR? What is UCR? Usual customary and reasonable fees. If you're on the administrative side, you, I bet you better know what this is. UCR. Usual customary and reasonable fees. I'll give you guys a few moments. Vanity Slay, I see that emoji. You like, huh, what? So you guys definitely learn this on administrative side. On the um, clinical side as well, we do, you know, as you guys can see, there is a little administration on the clinical tests. But you definitely know it on the um, administrative side. I know you do. I know yesterday there was a young lady that's for sure, um, taking a CMAA. I don't know if any, anybody here taking a CMAA. I think all of you guys are taking either the CCMA or the CMA. Okay, I see some answer coming in. Congratulations Kimberly, she just took her CMA today. Congratulations, congratulations. You're welcome. Congratulations. So happy, y'all are making me so happy. Alright, so let's talk about this. So let me just read this definition. Let's talk about it a little bit. So range of fees charged by providers who have similar training and experience and practice in the same geographical area. So when they are determining these fees that go in the fee schedule, right? They have to look at several different things. They look at what other providers are charging that have similar training, right? So what are other cardiologists charging, right? Uh, with the same training and experience and then in the same geographical area. Because we know like here in DC where the cost of living is high, you know, we can't charge the same thing here that they may charge in say, South Carolina, right? So they take all of that into consideration, okay? So the usual customary and reasonable fees is what providers will charge that who have similar training and experience as well and practice, as well as um, in the same geographical area, okay? So make sure you guys add that. It seemed a few of you guys were kind of questioning that. Make sure you add that. Because if it's on this study guide, it's because you gotta know it. Alright, uh, what is nephrolithotomy? What is that? What is a nephrolithotomy? Now, let me tell you guys this. Even if you have never saw, seen this word in your entire life, if you know terminology, you can at least have an idea of what it is. You have an idea of what, um, what organ is referring to, right, right? You have an idea what type of procedure it is because you are familiar with, with terminology. This is why it's so important, guys, that I always say, make sure you know your terminology. Make sure you should know every single body, the medical term for every single body part, every single body part. Every single organ, everything, everything dealing with the body. You need to know. If you don't already know, for those of you especially, somebody said they're taking their test Monday. Somebody said they're taking a test today. Make sure you know the term for every single body part, okay? Alright, let's see. So it's a procedure to use to remove kidney stones. So even if you didn't know that, you know that otomy is incision, right? Or cutting into? You know, nephro refers to kidney, right? And litho refers to stones. So you can kind of know, you know, okay, this has to do with, with kidney stones. Something has to do with that because you know your terminology. So you gotta, guys, you gotta know, because sometimes that terminology is going to be the determinant factors whether you get the answer right or not, just because you know terminology, even if you've never seen the word ever in your life. Okay, so make sure you are on it. If you know you struggle with terminology, make sure you're studying. And I do have a um, terminology video on this channel as well. Alright guys, so what is the expected heart rate, um, heart rate range for a six-year-old? Um, I do have a video here on the um, the vital sign ranges, but they're specifically for adults. I did not cover pediatrics because it, it, there are so many different ranges because some of the ranges they go by maybe like um, six to ten or, you know, ten to thirteen. And so I do recommend on your study guide, make sure you go in and, and um, get those ranges and write them down, okay? So you know them. I just, I just didn't have time to go over each of those ranges in my video, but make sure you know these ranges, alright? And then I, I noticed somebody put one fifteen and one thirty. So the way they'll ask the question, yeah, they'll give you a number and you have to determine whether that number is normal or abnormal. But if you know the range, which is why I specifically asked the range, because once you know the range, you can recognize whether a heart rate is normal or abnormal. So focus on knowing the range, okay? Seventy-five to one twenty for a six-year-old on NHA, okay? Now, it can vary. I see, I see different, um, I see different ranges. Oh, let me discompute over here. It's about to go dead. Oh, wait a minute. Um, I see different ranges. Now, depending on where you look, they may be a little different, okay? Um, now, I'll give you guys an example. So my students in our class today, they asked me about some, oh, matter of fact, we were talking about respiration rates for a um, for an infant. And um, in our, in the textbook, it says, um, twenty, it just says twenty plus. And then on um, NHA, I believe it's thirty plus. But my student looked online and it was like thirty to, I forgot the numbers, but just put it like this. It was different, okay? It was different from what we had. Depending on where you look, the range may be a little different. This is why you want to go by what the test, what your test says, okay? The test you're taking, go by that study guide because, for an example, we look at respiration for an adult. Depending on where you look, it'll say twelve to twenty on NHA. You look at something else, it may say fourteen to twenty or fourteen to twenty-two, okay? So you want to look at, you want to go by what's on yours, what's on the study material for your test. And then remember, each one varies a little for each age. That's one thing I notice with NHA. They break it down between age ranges, okay? Um, what's an example of health maintenance coaching? Health maintenance coaching, what's an example of that? Health maintenance, think about that. Health maintenance, what's an example of that? Give you guys a couple seconds. I don't see any answers coming in for this one. Alright, let's just keep it moving. So like your colonoscopy screenings, mammogram, even um, what we mentioned earlier, like bone density. So these are screenings, right? Um, like colonoscopy is checking for um, colon cancer, right? Um, mammogram, breast cancer. So these are screenings, these are um, routine, well, maintenance screenings, I should say, okay? So when you're doing health maintenance coaching, you're coaching patients on the importance of their screenings, okay? Um, and yesterday we talked about disease prevention. So that was like, um, that was um, and that's, and that's an example of something that was added to the three-point-O version, the screenings and the, 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 the teaching. So the one we talked about yesterday was disease prevention coaching, where we, where they talked about the um, importance of um, education on tobacco use and then hand washing, right? So make sure you guys are looking at that part of the study guide for your um, your teachings and your coachings. Uh, which body system is the body's outer layer? It helps protect the body. It's the outer layer and it helps protect the body. Which, okay, so skin, I see skin, but what body system is that? So we know skin, we know, we know skin protects the body. It's the biggest organ on the body. We know that. But this, which body system is that? And guys, just a reminder, make sure you know what each body system is responsible for. One thing I realized on one of the group study sessions that I did when I was asking the um, I asked about um, the functions for each body system and some people cannot, this, cannot um, describe or explain the body system structures as well as the um, the function. So make sure you know that. Alright. Entegumentary, yes, along with the, we got the skin, what else? Hair, nails. Alright, which body system delivers oxygen and removes carbon dioxide from cells? Delivers oxygen? Congratulations, uh, I don't know, is it Rip Gia? Or is that, I don't want to say the wrong thing, but congratulations. You just, she just passed with a four twenty-five. Congratulations and you're welcome. Delivers oxygen and remove carbon dioxide from the body cells. This is going to be respiratory system. Every time we breathe in, we're breathing in oxygen. When we breathe out, we're breathing out carbon dioxide, right? So circulatory system, I'm thinking maybe you guys put that because you're looking at the oxygen is delivering oxygen to the body. So it is true that our red blood cells does, it is responsible for transporting oxygen. But in this case, we're specifically talking about the respiratory system, okay? When we breathe in, we're breathing oxygen and breathing out carbon dioxide. Okay, which part of the chain of infection is where an infection can enter the, enter the body? Whip, which part of the chain of infection is where an infection can enter the body? Think about the, the, the five, um, the five links in the chain of infection. Make sure you guys know that as well. Hey Patricia, I see you just started classes from New York City. I'm glad you're getting a head start. Glad you're here. Which part of the chain of infection is where an infection can enter the body? Okay, I see the answers coming in. Yep, those of you that are saying portal, portal of entry, you are correct. So let's just quickly talk about those five cycles. Make sure you guys know them because they may ask you, what's the, what's the third or the second or fourth, right? They'll just throw them out there, but let's talk about it. So the first one, we have the um, reservoir host, right? That's the first link. Okay, so let's just use myself an example, as an example. I am infected, right? So let's say, um, so I'm the reservoir host. Let's say I sneeze, right? And my droplet leaves my nose. That's the portal of exit. The infection leaves my nose, leaves my body via the droplet from my nose, right? So that's the portal of exit. That's the second link, okay? So reservoir host, portal of exit. Now, the mode of transmission, and I'll just use Leah as an example, um, and let's say Leah is there. And let's say it either, let's say it gets directly on Leah. Let's say it gets on Leah's hand, ill. Or maybe it gets on the desk, right? And then Leah comes and touches. She comes and touches the, the, the part of the desk where my droplet just landed. That's the mode of transmission because now Leah is picking up my droplet. And then Leah, okay, so And then Leah, okay, so that's the third link, that's the mode of transmission, okay? So then Leah goes and she rubs her nose, or let's just say she's eating, and then she uses that hand that has caught my droplet and she's eating. And that is the portal of entry, because that is the way the infection enters her body, okay? And now what is Leah? Now Leah is the susceptible host. I'm assuming you mean grossly, right, ew? But this is what's happening every day, all day long. That's the cycle of infection. This is how people pick up things. It could be a mosquito bite. It could be, you know, because insects are also modes of transmission, right? And, um, it can be touching a door handle, right? That, right, touching a door handle that somebody just touched. This is why hand washing is so important, guys. Hand washing is the number one and best way to prevent disease, okay? But yes, that's the, that's the chain. The reservoir host, that's where it starts. That's, I am the, I am the incubator. This is where it's, you know, and that's actually a test question as well. They may ask, where is the, um, uh, how they may ask that. They, they, oh my goodness, I forgot. We just went over that as a, um, question in class today. But basically, they'll ask like, where's, where's being housed, right? And that is the reservoir host. Portal of exit is how it exits the body. And then the mode of transmission and is how it goes to the next person. And then a portal of entry is how it enters that, that next person. And that person becomes a susceptible host, okay? That's the five, uh, that's the chain of, um, infection. Alright, what virus is caused by mononucleosis? What virus is that? Yeah, Leah said gross. Leah, that is, it's, it's, um, when you really think about it, when you really look at it, if you ever looked up under a microscope, you guys ever looked up under a microscope? If you could just see, like, we, we don't see, it is a lot we don't see. If we could see it. Oh, she said, I use acronym, I remember, exited today and somewhere in home, okay? Um, yeah, guys, there's a lot, there's a lot, there's a lot. Okay, I see answers coming in. Alright, yep, Epsom bar. Uh, what immunization does the CDC recommend that we get every ten years? What seat, what immune, 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 sorry, immuna? Yeah, I could not say that. What immunization does the CDC recommend every ten years? Listen, vaccine, which one? Shoot, vaccine. I'll just say vaccine, cuz evidently I can't say immunization. Um, every ten years. Okay, I see somebody put something there. We're gonna keep it moving. Yep, tetanus and diphtheria. Yep, yep, yep. Tuberculosis is usually every year, depending on your job. Some jobs require it every year. I know schools require it. Well, some schools require that kids have it every year, but no, that's not every ten years. That's every, depends, every year or, um, um, it, it, that one depends. I know, um, uh, when I worked for, um, one of the companies that we have here in DC Unity, we had to get one every year. Alrighty, and when I say every, I'm referring to the TB test that Leah typed in, not the tetanus. That's every ten. Alright, what's a simple fracture? Make sure you guys know the different fracture types as well. What is a simple fracture? Can you guys tell? I'm getting tired. I'm getting, I'm just to the point where I'm ready to just, I'm, I'm kind of rushing through these. I am tired, ladies and gentlemen. But we wanna get through this. We just have a few more. We have a few more. Um, so pertussis, you know what? Um, so you're referring to T-DAP with the tetanus, diphtheria, and pertussis there? Now, I don't even, don't even quote me. I can't even remember how often you have to get that. I know kids have to get that. I don't know if adults have to actually get T-DAP with the pertussis, um, included. Kids definitely, when I worked in pediatrics, they had to, but I cannot remember. I have to look into that. I cannot remember. Simple fracture. Okay, it's a fracture, but it does not break through the skin. It does not break through the skin. Yep, I see that, um, Toya got that. Yep, it does not break through the skin. Yep, Leah, yep. Alright. Um, what's a displaced fracture? What kind of fracture is that? Congratulations, I think that's red mobile. Congratulations. When you say Red Bull, Red Bull, Red Mobile, when you say, would you like some help on what the test has? Are you asking if anybody needs help on that? Okay, so displaced fracture is when, um, the ends of the bone are no longer in alignment with another. Keyword displaced, no longer in alignment with another bone, okay? Um, true or false? Oh, and then also I wanna make a note. Make sure you guys go back to that section on your study guide fractures. Know all your fractures. Um, true or false, you must sterilize the skin prior to a surgical procedure. Is that true or false? You must sterilize the skin prior to a surgical procedure. Is that true or false? Should we sterilize the skin? Okay, you said the, the fractures weren't on, the, the, yeah. Okay, good point. Yeah, he, um, Red Mobile said the fractures wanna, yes, that's a good point. So it's hard to say, because every test is different. Um, every, every test, so it's hard to say, like, one test may have more administrative questions, another may have more terminology. It's just, it is so hard to, it is so hard to say, because you don't know. You don't know. Okay, let's see. So that's false. You use an antiseptic. So we cleanse with antiseptic. The, the skin is not strong enough for a ster, for sterilization. We clean with antiseptic, okay? So we don't actually sterilize the skin, okay? We use surgical antiseptic, okay? And that is a question. That is how they will get you. We don't sterilize the skin. But we do, yes, Red Mobile says sterilization kills the, kills the skin cells. That's correct. So we use surgical antiseptic, but we're not sterilizing the skin. We sterilize instruments, right? But we don't sterilize the actual skin. Okay, um, what does the abbreviation QH stand for? Kishonda, no, I'm not using the AMA outline, but a lot of it, a lot of this is on the AMA outline. All of the, a lot of it is. Like, like even for an example, like the, um, like this abbreviation right here, right? This is what I meant by foundational things being the same, no matter what test you're taking. Um, because this, it means the same thing on the RMA as it does on a CCMAs it does on a CMA. Okay. Yep, every hour, every hour. Uh, what is abbreviation QOD stand for? QOD. Let's see, I saw something I was about to respond to. Let me, while you guys are answering it, let me go back up really quickly with something I was about to answer. Oh, Toya, you said you're taking AMT in June. Okay, okay. I'm glad this is helping you. QOD, what is QOD? Why does it say? Okay, there we go. I couldn't see the answers at first. So someone put every other hour, every other hour would have been QOH, but no. Um, QOD is, um, every other day. We know QD is what, every day? QID, four times a day. BID, two times. TID, three times. Make sure you guys know these, um, 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 abbreviations. Um, something else I was about to say, I can't remember. It'll come back. Um, something else I was about to say regarding, um, the abbreviations. It'll come back. Alright, what does coaching on diagnostic tests involve? Here goes another coaching question again. Okay, let's see. Yep, test preparation. Yep, you're on it, Kishonda. So instructing patients on preparing for testing, yep. So the health maintenance was, um, coaching on, um, your, 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 your screenings, right? Your disease prevention coaching was on disease prevention, right? Washing your hands, that's the number one way to, um, prevent diseases. We said to, um, educating the patient on tobacco use, right? Avoiding tobacco use can, you know, avoid different diseases. Well, what else did we talk about? Um, the, um, uh, what is, another one was, um, treatment plans. We talked about that yesterday, right? Um, and that one involved, um, what was, which one was that one? That one involved, like, um, teaching a patient how to use their glucometer, right, um, at home. Um, alright, next one. Which appointment type allows the scheduling of four appointments in the first hour of the hour and blocking the schedule for the last half hour? Which appointment type allows a scheduling of four appointments in the first half? I'll give you guys a few moments to answer that. Okay. You said mute. I'm not sure what you were referring to when you said mute. Yep, modify wave. Yep, so modify wave, they'll have, uh, all the pay, well, let's talk about wave and modify wave, cuz they're very similar. So like modify, let me give you an example of wave scheduling. So again, I'm gonna use some of you for it as an example. So let's say me, Leah, and Toya, we're all scheduled at nine o'clock. And then we're all scheduled at nine o'clock. So with wave, that entire hour is, the rest of the hour is open. So we are only scheduled at nine o'clock. There's no nine fifteen or nine thirty. So this is wave, okay? It's no nine fifteen or nine thirty. We're all scheduled at nine o'clock. The rest of the hour is left open for the provider to see all three of us, as well as if he needs to catch up on any phone calls or lab results, right? The rest of the hour is left open. And then as we come in, let's say I come in first, Toya comes in second, Leah comes in third. They're gonna see us in the order in which we arrive, okay, right? We're all at the top of the hour. With modify wave, me and Toya may be at nine o'clock, right? And then Leah may be at nine fifteen or nine twenty, depending on if it's fifteen or twenty-minute appointments, right? Um, or maybe even, it may be a fourth patient in there, right? So we're all loaded up in that first part of the hour. And then the other, the rest of the hour is left open. So with wave, they're at that one appointment slot, right? But the whole hour is left open, of course. With the modify wave, there may be more than, um, three patients. So, and they can be scheduled within fifteen-minute increments or twenty. Cuz like one example, I know they may ask is, you know, if the, if it's, would you put that next patient at nine fifteen? If it's a twenty-minute appointment, no, you would put him at nine twenty if the appointments are twenty minutes, okay? So hopefully that helps for anybody that was confused. So wave, and then you have modify wave, which is just a modification to the wave scheduling, okay? Hopefully that helped you guys, that was, um, anybody that was confused. At what angle should the needle be inserted for vein a puncture? At what angle should a needle be inserted for vein a puncture? Oh my goodness, guys, we've been on for over a, for over an hour already. Oh my goodness. This is the last one, though. Fifteen degrees. Yay! So guys, just a reminder, I'm having this group study session on April twentieth. The link is in the bio if anybody wants to join. I hope that this was helpful. Guys, do me a favor and exit the chat if it was helpful, like this video. Oh, guys, I see that, um, some of you guys are putting like forty-five or, so this is the thing. So yes, so the answer is fifteen, but we do know that depending on how deep or superficial a vein is, we may go a little higher or a little lower, but the answer is gonna be fifteen, okay? Um, because it's gonna depend. If you have a deeper vein, right? You're, 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 if you have a deeper vein, you're gonna go a little higher, right? But if you have a very superficial vein, let's say you're going in the hand. When you're going in the hand, you're very low. That's almost like five degrees, because you're going almost parallel to this, like you're almost like a, almost like a PPD, because you're going, you're just going right into that superficial vein that's sitting right on top of the skin. Yes, Salma says it depends on how deep the vein is. That is so true. If you, if this video was helpful, do me a fa, do me a favor, guys, and like that video. Someone asks how you can pay me, and that is how, just like the video and subscribe if you're not already subscribed. My medical assistant group is called the, um, the Medical Assistant Lounge on Facebook. You guys can join that. You can go to bookwithmisskay.com. If you wanna book a session with me, you can join a group session on April twentieth, or you can do a one-on-one session, no pressure. I don't know when I'm gonna do this live again. I'm pretty sure it's not gonna be until next month, sometime in April. I, let me know if you guys have any questions, too. Go ahead and put that in the chat. I got a few minutes to answer any questions, so go ahead and put it in the chat now. But I was gonna say, um, I'm not gonna have any time to go live again. I happened to go live two, that, two days in a row, only because I had these slides already created. So I said, I'm gonna make sure I go live twice this week, okay? Um, I'm going to set a goal to try to do a video several times a week in April. The goal is gonna be, I'm gonna try every day in April. I'm just, it's just a personal goal I had for myself to try to do a video every day in April, or at least a few times a week, okay? So look out for that. You're welcome, Jen. You're welcome, Tori, as always. If you have any questions, let me know. Put it in the chat. You're welcome, Toya. Let me know if you have any questions before I end this. You guys hung in there with me for an hour. Wow, we've been a hour and eight minutes today. Tori, I missed you yesterday. Um, do we have to write out answers, or will they all, all multiple choice, Devana? They're all multiple choice. Now, there are, there may be some questions where you have to, um, like label something, like for an example, they may have a picture of an EKG, even that will be multiple choice, but there are some questions where there may be a picture there. You have to, um, you, you may have to, um, like label it, like, like for an example, they may show you a picture of an artifact. You have to, you know, what, would know what artifact it is. It, they, they'll have like, um, different arrhythmias, EKG arrhythmias. You gotta know which one it is. They may, um, what else is a diagram they may have on there? Um, I know definitely EKGs, um, what else they may show you, um, I can't think of anything else right now, but yeah, so yeah, but it's all multiple choice. And, um, some of them will have pictures that you have to label or recognize, or, you know. and um, some of them will have pictures that you have to label or recognize, or, you know. But yes, all multiple choice, and although the test is multiple choice, the reason why I do this open-ended questions, the reason why I do this, this open-ended study is because if you know it, if you can answer these questions, oh, you are more than ready, you are more than ready, because if you know it, you know it. Okay? Tori says, congratulations to everybody that passed their test. Are some questions worth more points, um, so some sections, I don't know, the, so some sections are worth more, so like for an example, if you look at your outline, the sections, like for an example, terminology, I can't think right offhand, so I'm not gonna say, I don't wanna speak the wrong thing, but some sections way more, so like patient care, for CCMA anyway, is the bulk of your score, the patient care? That's why you guys, look up your test outline, so if you're taking a CCMA, just, you could simply Google um, CCMA three point O outline, and it'll show you, it'll, it'll weigh it for you, so the question itself is not necessarily weighed, it is the the section, so like your, your patient healthcare is that weightiest section, and you got anatomy, then you have administrative, they all have um different, um, they all weigh differently to equal one hundred percent. And for CCMA, you gotta have at least a seventy-eight percent, that's three ninety out of five hundred, you gotta have at least that to pass. Um, I can't remember what the passing score for the other tests are, I think, um, I think it's seventy-four, I'm, I can't remember, guys, I can't remember. But you can always look on the website to see. You're welcome, Devana, so the practice test, Ava, which test are you taking? If you're taking the CCMA, you're just gonna go to NHANOW dot com, and you can look on the left side and click on medical assistant, and then um, you can find a practice test there, if you're going, if you're taking the RMA, you gotta go to AMT, which is AmericanMedTech dot org, or the um A A M A, you have to go to that website. You're welcome, Jen and Kishonda, everybody, yes, Toya said that RMA is seventy, yes. It's seventy out of one hundred. Okay, so yep, the four, it's four oh five, the AMA, thank you, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get your name wrong again, I'm not, I am not, so I'm not even gonna say it. But that's one of my girls, she was on my last group study session, yes, four oh five and above. Okay, guys, any questions, any other questions, I'm gonna let you guys go in a minute, every time I end it, it seems like a question pops up, and I find myself prolonging ending it, cuz it happens every time. Alright, guys, I don't see anything. Alright, guys, so I'm going to end this, you all have a great day. Um, Red Mo, you are welcome, you are welcome. Definitely, you are so welcome, Red Mobile, you are so welcome. Okay, guys, you guys have an awesome day.